President and vice presidents from the school, as well as the president of the sports boosters and the music boosters, to a meeting in January to let them know what we're doing and let them know we are not in direct competition with them. We want to work with them to enhance the Daniel Blue Mary School District. We're also working and working with the junior class and sponsoring their prom activity with the car crash. Be a donor for that. And in the next couple of months, we're going to be advertising to hire executive director to run the foundation. As I said, the meeting will be the third Thursday in a month involving any and all members to come and join us and help support this process.
Good timing to meet.
The meeting starts at seven o'clock. We like to keep it to an hour, and we've got the lockdown in an hour. So far, we've created our mission statements in front of you and initiated these programs.
Bob Newell also attends all of those meetings.
Any board members have any questions?
What is your challenge with the alumni set specifically? You were hoping for volunteers in the alumni category. In what regard?
We feel that the chairperson for this committee should be in office of Daniel Blue Mary School District. Currently, the board members are not, but we have reached out to a couple people that went through the application process. Dr. Otto and Bob Newell started, and we are at the end of that line. So we're looking for somebody that we have an interest in reaching out to the alumni, in gift giving, as well as the initiative to get the word out of the good things that are happening in this district.
How many more volunteers are you thinking you need? They say volunteers are needed. Do you have a number, a specific number that you need?
We are looking at keeping it no more than ten on the boards, and we probably would need another four or five more. Volunteers then we need to work with the committee. So if there is an opportunity of people who do not want to be on the board, just certain individuals specifically.
Okay. Any other questions from board members?
I have a comment. I'd just like to thank the Blazer Foundation and everybody who serves on the board for what they're doing. I'm sure it takes a lot of time and a lot of energy and a lot of effort, and I just want to say thank you.
I will echo Mr. Kurtz's comments on that. It takes a lot for people to step up and volunteer for these organizations. It takes a lot of time, and we really welcome your input. It's been something that's been needed for a long time. Thank you. Anybody else have any comments?
No, I think we're good. Thank you, Joe. Thank you, board members. I just want to again stress, I've been in meetings with them, and they really, we are off to a good start. We really haven't raised any money yet, but we're getting to the point where I think that's going to change. At this time, I'd like to invite our athletic facilitator to come up and give us kind of a wrap-up on our fall sports. As you know, we're on the cusp of beginning our winter sports practices already. Ms. Goss.
Good evening. I'm just going to briefly share with you both briefly each fall sport. Also, we're changing the church for the month of October, raising money for residential awareness. For the first time, we had a community cap round with all 10 schools in the county. Each school and community worked together to raise money for residential awareness. I wanted to tell you that the Daniel Blue Mary members have actually raised $1,600 of a total of $12,000 that the whole county raised. They were recognized by JUICE, JUICE rank, and received a plaque to be placed in our school for the year. Feel happy. The girls' college training their goals best that they set themselves. For example, they allowed fewer goals and scored more goals. They worked hard and continued to get better at working. Steps seniors to Melissa Jordan made division one first team. More than a year ago, made division two second team all division. Football, transferring to a new coach and a new system, the guys did well. They never quit week after week, gave it their all with a tough schedule and learning the new system. The team never quit and always made it themselves. Boys soccer. Boys soccer team, young and tough, they had a small senior class with excellent leadership. Their record was nine and eight. They made it to the Birds County quarterfinals. They were in a playoff overtime game to the ball. Andrew Griffiths in the second team all county. Jason Burgess, all division, honorable mentions, went to Scott Guyer, Patrick Cho, and Paul Denver. All four seniors, Andrew Griffiths, Scott Guyer, Patrick Cho, and Hunter Bishop, were selected to play in the Birds County All-Star game. Girls soccer. The girls soccer team recorded record for five and two. They played some very tough, very strong opponents and played with them, and then they were gone. Nicole Savage was in all county second team, and she also won the Birds County Girls Soccer Scholarship. Kelly Howard's soccer team, all division, honorable mention, went to Mary Roberts, Kelly, Dawn Leo, and Margaret. The boys cross country team had an excellent season, finished ninth and sixth. They worked hard in all camps, and in all seasons, and they were received. Matt Steny was the county initiative medalist, state qualifier, and also received all county honors. Girls cross country. For the first time in the school district, the girls cross country team had a 14-1 record. They were second in county and placed fifth in districts as a team. Alex Samuel, state qualifier, all division. Alex Snyder, state qualifier, all division. Abby Snyder, all county. Emily Durso, Emily Ritchie, and Samantha A. Rock, all division. This year was a good year for girls tennis. The team went 1-15. The first win in school history for girls tennis was in San Diego, and all the girls participated in the county athletic tournament. Girls level. Girls level team had a very successful season. They came to 11-4 and made it to the county tournament. They advanced to the second round of districts and also a hardball match. They all went to every county and entered all districts. Courtney Givich received all division and several received honorable mentions.
Thank you, Michelle. Does anyone else have any questions? Congratulations. Sounds like it was a great season.
Busy. Absolutely.
Okay. Moving on to item D.
Yes, the last thing, just this is a general reminder for the public. Board's obviously aware of it. We only have a one-week break between this meeting and next week for our voting meeting due to the Thanksgiving holiday. There's a quirk in our schedule. I'm sure students are very happy. As of next Friday, there's not back to school until 10 days later. So we have kind of a long Thanksgiving break this year for students. Also, just looking ahead to next month, again, for those of you who brave and come out to our meetings, our meeting schedule next month is off of our regular schedule. The first Monday of the month, which I believe is December 3rd, is our board reorganization. So the board goes through its paces in terms of determining who the officers will be for next year, and then we will have our regular committee of the whole meeting that night. Two weeks hence, we will have on the third Monday this next month, our board voting meeting. So just for those of you that come regularly, keep that in mind. You might miss that. So that concludes my report under the superintendent's report.
Okay. Any questions for Dr. Otto? Okay. Seen none. Any questions from the public on any of those items? Okay. Seeing none. Curriculum instruction?
We have no report this month. Mr. Shaheen, do we have a meeting date for?
Yeah, it's the first Thursday of December.
So the first Thursday in December, which would be three, four, December 6th, I believe, is our next curriculum and instruction meeting.
Okay. Buildings and ground?
Just some update on our community bridge work. I don't know about, I don't know how it is for some of you that live here in the community as we go around here, it's becoming increasingly more difficult to just get from point A to point B, no matter where you live, it seems anymore. I don't have good news for you. We've been informed that there's going to be work on the river bridge and railroad bridges in Douglasville. We heard that at the facilities committee. We didn't really know where to handle it, even though it's not our facility. But what happened was is they're going to be moving those projects up sooner than anticipated. Why we're talking about it here is it's going to have a major impact to us as far as rerouting certain bus runs to work around the closure. The river bridge project, or the railroad bridge project, and for those of you that know, down by Klein's, is slated now to start in January of 2013. That was supposed to start later when it originally was floated as a plan, with the river bridge to follow immediately after, and we can't really anticipate that time, with both projects slated for June 2014 completion. And just as a side note, progress continues on the Hay Creek Bridge, which is the one that's tying up Birdsboro. As far as we know, that's slated to be completed by next summer, by June of 2013.
Dr. Otto, with the bridge under the Monocacy Creek Road Bridge, the bridge at Klein's and the one over here, which is 345, we're in two.
Hay Creek.
That's all being done one time?
Actually, the Monocacy ones.
Yes.
Is still open.
Monocacy's open.
But to answer your question.
But you thought he just mentioned that that was.
Yes. No.
No, the river bridge in Douglasville, the long span.
Okay.
So you've got the river bridge. The two bridges that are right next to each other.
Your question, Mr. Shaheen, is yes, there'll be four bridges out.
There'll be four bridges.
It's going to be tough getting around the community.
One time, which means all the buses will be covered in one road.
Pretty much, yes. Well, the one, the one on 345, when I understand, will all be open, it will only be in one lane now. The one going out of Birdsboro towards 422, that will never actually close.
Correct.
One lane.
Right.
So they can't commit that way.
Which way is it one lane compared to going out?
Well, it won't matter. They'll have, I think they'll have stop signs.
But again, I mean, we're talking about maybe possibly having to adjust the guidance today or.
I don't think it's that drastic. Go ahead.
I think there'll be an impact. Mr. Klein and Mr. Rose are discussing right now, it could be a 15, 20-minute delay. So they'll have to be either stop pump-up time. It's going to be fuel costs, so obviously we're going to have to really eye that up. I don't know if it's a good thing, because they were talking about closing both and doing the bridges in there last year. They were talking about doing.
Then there'd be no way the bridge.
Now it's going to be one of them.
It's going to be a little island around here soon, traffic-wise.
Yeah, the railroad bridge won't be much of a detour to them, they said. It's going to be the next one over the river. So get ready.
We'll keep you posted. As far as the, any more questions on that? The annex kitchen plan, we're still in the initial design phase with the project, and we are actually now waiting, there's a little bit of a snag for the township engineers to determine whether or not we can reuse the current drip pans and the hoods in the annex kitchen. So that's an issue that we have to get clearance on, and depending on that response, it may have an impact on the project budget and ultimately on the entire project. So we are awaiting their evaluation and response right now with some issues with Mr. Smith. He's unable to be here to discuss that further tonight, but I'll keep you posted on where we stand on that. Mr. Potts, anything to add?
No, I think he's pretty well with the, with the hoods. That was a big concern, if we could grandfather that, and obviously, I said the walk-ins.
Do they just not meet existing code requirements?
The hoods aren't. They don't look drippy, but the walk-ins, they need some compressors. We were discussing with moving the walk-in freezers from the high school kitchen, and that is out of question.
That's it for facilities.
Any questions on facilities? Any comments from the public on facilities? Okay. Seeing none. We'll move on to finance.
I'd like to just go a little out of order here since we're going to have a presentation. Obviously, there will be routine course approvals for item B. Item C is there are some real estate tax refunds that will be, need your vote next week, and.
Can you explain what exceptions and splits? That's the reason for those exceptions.
Mrs. Penza will explain those.
On your, on your front page there, the first, I should say, day's part of exceptions and splits.
Yes, I'll let her enter that into record.
Yeah, my, splits are, I don't even know how to describe it. Let's say you have your property, and then part of it might go clean and green, and that would be a split. Exceptions are things that we get from the township, such as maybe you had damage or something, and they're allowing you to, I don't know. I can think of one, it's not in this, but there was like a garage or something, and I think it was demolished, and they were, they reduced the assessment on that.
Do you typically have enough of a prop appreciate for that, okay, split process for the whole green?
Every year there's different, well, that's not the only thing, but there's, I mean, every year there's splits and exceptions. I mean, I can get more detail from you if you want to break down.
I just, I, we did them exceptions in the past because of military service and other things. I mean, this is maybe the first time I've actually been called some, see what it says, splits and exceptions, and I've never heard of the term. Splits before, I don't know if you've heard of that.
All right, well, I'll get you some more information, and from past history.
So with that said, I'd like to turn it over now to Herbines representative, Mrs. Linda Heimbach, to present to you the findings of the annual final year audit. Linda, it's all yours. Board members, you do have a copy in your packet of the report.
It was in a package. It was in a package.
Did you have? Okay. Excuse me, pull the microphone down closer. Thank you.
There's the balance.
This is actually the page of the third house, and the PA office of budget was going to, as soon as they got it before. We have unqualified opinions on three levels. First, we audit the numbers, then we do an audit of the government audit standards, and we'll improve the general controls and compliance. And then the last piece we look at is specifically the way the year of that program. In all three areas, we have an unqualified opinion. It's what we call a keen opinion. It's the highest level of assurance that we can issue. The other thing we will see on this page is has a lot of questions regarding whether we found any material weaknesses, significant deficiencies, and you can see that we have all the answers as far as the internal controls here at Daniel Blue. They're operating and working as they're designed. The last question I want to point out is, the last question on the other page, says, does the audit be qualified as a low-risk audit? And the answer to that question is yes. What that means is the last two years of the audit, as well as the current year, we've had no findings, no material weaknesses, no deficiencies to report on. That being said, like Ashley just hit highlights of the general fund, and that's what we found on page 44, and I don't know. If you look at our accounting screen, we have questioned 48.8 million dollars. Our action revenue expanded at 49,206,000 dollars. That was positive areas of $288,000. Most of that you see is in the state revenues. There's two items that actually attribute to that increase over. One was you were fortunate enough to get special ed and extra records. And the other thing was, we initially did your budget, the accountability act was not in, and then it was reinstated by state, and those money's aren't included in the state sources. We look at our expenditures. We have questioned 49 and a half million dollars. We came in at 49,180,000. This is very poor variance of 370,000. And it's across the board in all categories. Couple reasons. Positions weren't necessarily filled, that were, that were made vacant during the year. The piece of rate that was questioned and what Ashley came in is a contributing factor. And then the last thing was, it was a very long winter last year, so there were significant savings in the debt services that are. We continue on to the next page. You'll see that overall, our revenue succeeded our expenses by 117,000 dollars, bringing our fund out at the end of the year to 445,000 dollars. Now that has been allocated to a few different areas. If you go to page five, this is a review of what the areas are. I'm checking 595,000 dollars in that fund out, potentially for prepay expenses. There's 732,000 in there for specific grants and money that can be used for specific purposes. There is also 188,000 pulled out because we fully entered the roadblock of this ERT office that not only did they do the dance of earning the tax funding, but then they turned around and gave you that statement out all over again. So they actually basically took quarters of earning the tax and that would help this first year of 2013, and being able to pay for that. Last thing is we adopted your budget for 2013. You budgeted the use of fund outs of 1,300,000 dollars. We do an aside fund out of 2.6 million dollars. That is about 5% of next year's operating expenditures. One of the things that I do want to comment on here is what we're seeing with most schools, and that is because of the impact of the pension liability, and we'll slay this all year. But most schools are starting to let this set aside, they go down to help cover that. This year, it was over a 3% increase, and next year it's 4%, and that's the way it's structured pulling out. Those numbers keep escalating. If you actually go to page three, two pages from that. It was state-owned net assets. What this does, this indicates your operating budget, operating numbers, and imagine most of the whole school. This is what gold, gold, this will be bond rated agencies will be using when they start looking at school districts, and when you're issuing bonds, how to rate your district. Picks up all the big assets in the school, and also picks up all the debt in the school. All the liabilities are included with one exception, and that is the pension liability. That pension liability will be picked up by your noncurrent liabilities, and will have a definite impact on net assets. One of my peers who just had a meeting the other day, the county group with Hatto, and they had two representatives there, part of the teachers group themselves. One of the things we've been trying to do is get them to give us a basic idea of what this liability will be for each district. What they did say is, we took your annual payroll, and multiplied it by 2.5 times. That's in the ballpark of what your liability would be. Daniel Blue has a $23 million annual payroll, so what we're talking about is basically 59 million dollars of pension liability that will have to go on the loss. And you're not alone, it's every, it's every school in this state that has money now. But what that will clear to you, your net assets at this point, old service schools will be showing a negative net asset. What does that mean for the bond rated companies and future bond issues? We don't know yet. I mean, we're not sure what we're going to be doing, but one of the things that will be doing is looking at the current year of the district. If you go to page four. Page four, your report, acting takes the position on an annual basis. And the third line at the bottom, I just want you to take a look at that. On a full, full basis, picking up all of your accrued expenses and all of your accrued revenue, we did not have an asset. We had a loss of $2 million. Something that has to do with the valuation was derivative. Next year, we looked at this, it was $2 million positive swing. The year before that, it was a negative swing. They're looking at, I think so right now, we have back and forth trend with this picture, but the plan is that we're looking at whether we're evaluating the school and its health in the future. So I did look at that, and that's actually that liability we're going to have your books June 2015. So we have two more years that we're having to be busy leveling on my interest papers. We also issued a management letter, or is it a management letter, in the states, we have to pause. We did talk about that pension would be brought on board in the coming years. That was really good. If you have any other questions.
Any board members have any questions? I just had a simple question. On page five, in the left-hand column, you refer to that debt service, the 1.2 million dollars there. Why has that title changed from one audit to the next? In the past, you've called it different things. Page five.
On the balance sheet, governmental funds.
The rest of that question?
Yeah, just the first column, it says debt service, 1.2 million dollars. I'm assuming that's referring to the money that we set aside from the derivative product?
Yes.
Right. So why has that title changed from one audit to the next over the last few years?
It's, it's been called debt service, it's been called, basically, it was money set aside for swap. When they came out, we had to give it before last year, we didn't have any specific titles. It's, we decided it was really not a special one, it was more specifically related to debt service, after we were for the digital retirement to hear that.
Okay. I was just curious, because it seemed to change from one audit to the next, and it gets a little confusing.
It's the same one, just applying as we did before, which changed places last year.
Okay. Thank you.
Honor, honor. We have to take voice out of payroll. Enough to take, you said, every, almost every year, I mean, almost every school district in the state that runs, you know, like it.
Yes, right now, the piece of liability itself is estimated to be $30 million. That's split between all school districts. And each individual school does not have a reference card out. And one of the things that will be taking place in the next 10 years is the actual areas we'll be looking at each school district, their plans at their place, and what their share of that liability is. The other thing that will be impacting that liability is that valuations that are in two years. And one of the things that has been happening the last couple years is, you know, with attrition and curtailment of positions, we're seeing more of our people entering the retirement system. So that's also going to be a drain on the system and the assets that are in there now.
So what was it, it was 59 million dollars roughly for us?
You said our share was 11 million dollars.
Your share, they said. It's ballpark, they said, take the payroll times 2.5.
Now, that affects us with.
Bond rate.
Basically, yeah, because there will be a different way to help, but one of the comments, you know, I've got support is every school in the state has to wait there before you have a net of net asset position. This doesn't mean, you know, we're not like everybody else saying, but right now, we have a pension plan, and that's to be, something has to be done with it. Unfortunately, you have no control over that liability, but you will have full fat liability.
We need to be action a little bit more, because we're part of 116 in career technology centers. So I would think that they're affording some piece of this also, which, again, you'll come back to us in the end, but 116, you could have had that one. back to us in the end, but one of 16, you could have that one. But every other county, well, most counties have a.
Some system of, of taxes.
It's not 59 million. Right, right, well, that 59 million has to do with, that doesn't include, that doesn't include career technology center.
That is not a good portion of the college.
Well, that's what they've done with the payroll. I mean, it's just a big, but it's, it's just not that, it's a portion of that too.
And the thing that we recognize is this is not being a fundamental annual basis. They will continue to value your plan and come a little bit away. If you can see that liability, you can weigh your long-term hobby and your point unless they change or less of, and that exists.
Does anybody have any other questions? Comments? Any questions from the public? Figure I'd hit it now. There'll be more questions on other things. Okay, thank you very much, appreciate your help.
Thank you, Linda. You ready?
Yep.
Finally, we met last week to present the finance committee. As you remember, we were given the task to come up with a first pass at the 1314 budget. We did present and discuss the balanced budget, hypothetically speaking. That represents what we would have to do today, if we had to balance it. We also reviewed some revenue and expenditure reports, and the expenditure variance report had a rather long meeting, about two hours plus. So Andrew, I'll turn it over to you, and.
I think the board has been copied on the working documents that were provided by Ms. Penza to the finance committee. I think the one that probably will draw your eye is the summary sheet, which is basically the budget summary, where it shows revenues to be assumed that basically flat for this coming year, at about 50 million dollars, and expenditures up at about 55 million dollars, which leaves a budget gap of around 5 million dollars. You can look at the actual versus budget expense report to really drill down into what is driving these additional costs. Essentially, what it comes down to is we see salaries increasing about 1.5 million dollars, we see benefits increasing 1.7 million dollars, and the purchase of professional services about another 300,000 dollars. So about 3.5 million dollars out of the 5 million is driven purely by increases in salaries and benefits, which is about 71% of the overall gap. The balance is essentially picked up in large part by our increase in debt service from last year. So if you recall, we had about 800,000 dollars that we used to defuse the bonds, so our debt payment, instead of being 7 million dollars, was around 6.2 million. This year, it'll be 7 million dollars again. So you see a variance from year to year of that 800,000 dollars. Those are really the big-ticket items that were driving the budget differences. And tuition to charter schools is going up slightly by about 100,000 dollars, but for the most part, what I've just outlined for you are where you see the discrepancies between revenues and expenses. So what we had asked of the administration was to not only show us where we are, but also show us a solution to get to a balanced budget. And what they proposed was basically an all of the above options solution. So they're talking about tax increase by the maximum amount, we're talking about reducing programming, we're talking about use of fund balance, and really, those are the three levers that we have to pull, unless, of course, we enter into some negotiations with our union contracts. So in the absence of the negotiations, we have those three levers to pull, and we literally pulled all three of those levers to get to a balanced budget. So you look at a maximum amount tax increase with the index, and exception one, exception two, which is for Peasers and special education, we've thrown the sale of the Rudolph property as a possibility, and cuts in, use of fund balance of about 1.4 million dollars, and cuts in programming, which equivalent of about 27 and 1/2 staff positions. So that's where we are, and that's sort of what we spent a lot of time discussing, is what were the assumptions being used by the administration to get to these numbers? Clearly, there's a lot that needs to be refined going forward in terms of what the state will provide, if it's going to increase or decrease. Right now, we have level funding from last year as part of our assumptions. Overall, tax base is relatively flat, it decreased a little bit, but it's pretty much the same.
It's fair to say that the state's not going to deal with that, you know, more.
Oh, I would, I would think that's a fair assumption. Yep.
More than fair.
At all, I mean, it's not going to even be a million dollar thing, so we're even.
Right. Just as we worked fairly hard on this over the month of October, it's a little ramping up our timeframe, but it actually gives us a good starting point. I won't say good starting point, that's not the word, it gives a starting point. One of the things that we attempted to do when we were assigned this project was to look at all the possibilities. So if you look at the numbers that Mr. Basil just presented, there's about 2.4 million of that on the revenue side, and about 2.6 on the expenditure side. So it's, we're trying to keep it as balanced as possible as we look for a solution. Obviously, there are a lot of assumptions that need to be made between, this is November, but between now and, 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 and June. So there's just, I think it's important to enter into the record at this time, as far as program cuts this year, the state has altered its process. If you remember, we went through a rather rigorous process to do program curtailments. That has changed this year with school code changes. It's really just the board formulating those, and then basically sending them off to Harrisburg, and then they say, as long as you're compliant with the school code and with state board regulations, they say, okay. So for example, if we were to, say, eliminate fifth grade science, which, don't take that as something we would do, we would just do a curtailment application to eliminate fifth grade science, you would approve it, it would go off to Harrisburg, and then that would give you the lever, it wouldn't mean you would have to. But if you remember, there was a secondary process in there where it had to be approved by us, and we'd send it off and wait for approval from the state. That return process is gone. So as we go through this process, there are still a lot of conversations that we have to have, but I just wanted to enter, that, that's, that's an important one.
How does that differ as far as timeframes go? From the way it used to be to the way.
Well, you used to have to allow yourself turnaround time with the state, now you don't.
Now, as soon as we vote on it.
Now, you, you direct me, we look at it, I write it, we talk about it, you present it, you vote on it, send it to Harrisburg, done.
Meetings, committee, all the voting meetings.
Correct. So you could do it literally in 14 days. I would ask for a little more lead time.
It seems like we should be setting ourselves up for what is our plan B for fund balance? We should be stopping at 1.4 million dollars. We should know what that would cost us in either programming or curriculum or whatever at this point, to know what that would be.
Our, our current fund balance is, yeah, our current fund balance is 4.3 million dollars.
2.6.
2.6.
2.6 unassigned.
That's right. So I think we, we need to know what that would cost us to give up, so that when we're, if we're deciding, are we going to fund balance or what, we need to know what makes up that 1.4 million dollars that's going to be imposed. Because maybe that, you know, I know that's a couple months off, and that decision's got to be informed about it.
Well, Mrs., I think you go on to the right side of the page, and it's not, you can't say that you wanted 1.4 million dollars or something on the expenditure side, and you may select something on the expenditure side, and I may, I may pick it for something else. We need to come to an agreement of, but 1.4 is already, so that's, that addition 1.2 is, is what is, is what we got to be able to use, break something in program back and use it off. 1.4 is already there, and we gave up those other things on the other side of the ledger already. So if we want to save something from the other side, we have 1.2 more to use, and/or anything else, yes, we have to find other ones.
I have a question. When, when is the timetable for a referendum? I mean, let's face it, we're talking about programs, we're talking about massive 5.5 million dollars, we might be putting this up for a voter referendum. So it, Mrs. Penza, by the next meeting or so, could you give us, there is a process that we, I don't know. The only school district I know recently, I guess, was one missing, correct?
Just three years ago, yeah.
Correct. So again, that keeps, I, I'd rather know now than wait till February and realize we missed that deadline.
It's related to the primary schedule.
It's, it's much finer than that at all.
I don't know it off the top of my head.
No, I, I knew you would, but I'm saying is, we might want to consider a referendum. We might not be all sober on our own. I mean, I mean, yes, we can, we can take the draft exception, but taxpayers might want to have a say in this, especially depending on what we, we present to curtail. So I think we should definitely look at that option.
We will get back to you with that, that date.
Well, actually, I'm very glad you guys did this early, because that, that does give us more time to, to think about this and, and absorb it. And then, like I said, I think we'll give ourselves more options just because of knowing this earlier in the year, that maybe, like I said, the referendums or wherever else, you know, things we could look at, options.
Looking at here as far as the solution or the first pass at this, obviously, none of us like it.
Yeah, none of us like it, of course not.
So I, I don't want to, I don't want to diminish that, but as, as far as the work that was done, I think this is kind of.
Oh, absolutely, I agree with you.
A phenomenal job. I mean, we're sitting here in November, and we know what we would have to do to make it a balanced cost right now today.
And again, and again, I'm not saying it's wrong, but I'm sure there's a little bit of an error, and that's fine, you know, even if it's 5%, it's not, it's still bleak, and even if you do a 5% error rate, that, it could be, we got 5% more income or revenue, it doesn't really matter, and you're still looking at a very bad budget. So again, I commend, commend both Mrs. Penza and Dr. Otto for the job that they did, but I think we need to start talking about this a lot earlier than January, February.
I think, well, just to get back to Mr. McLaughlin's comment, basically what we did in this, just this initial, really, this math exercise, was the last thing we filled in after we found everything that we thought would be eligible to be reduced and used on the revenue side, then we filled in the balance with fund balance at this point. Obviously, that is subject to change based on the discussion that we have going down the road. Obviously, everyone had, we've had an opportunity to talk about this a little bit, I mean, the finance, finance, and everyone really needs to kind of digest what they're reading here as far as what some of these potential expenditure adjustments would be. But, but my thinking is, you know, we, we should start jumping into budget workshops as soon as we can and.
Correct.
And tackle each one of these items one at a time. You know, if you look at some of these items that, it's almost Penza's sheet here, you know, we could, we could spend the whole budget workshop, just tell them that one, you know, just pull it out and see.
We should probably do like one revenue, one expense every workshop. No more, no less, I mean, yeah, you don't want, you don't want to start throwing.
I feel like there's so much more structure.
Correct, correct. You don't want to throw, you don't want to throw too many things in the ring, focus on one, on one each, at each workshop, and then start going forward.
I understand if you take one of these off the table, you've got to.
Correct, I agree with you.
Right. Another thing you need to be aware of too is if, if you adjust some of these expenditures, there's an impact on the revenue side as well. Because we've, we've lost some revenue because we eventually got rid of something on the other side.
And I would hesitate to say we're going to be able to take things off the table in the budget workshops. I think it's more a matter of drilling down into these different categories and analyzing where do the numbers come from, what assumptions are being made, are those assumptions valid, and when can we expect to get more reliable information to refine those assumptions into something that's a little more concrete? So clearly, there's some work that needs to be done, but.
I would just say on the expenditure side, without getting into much detail, the number that was floated regarding the, the potential staff, that's fairly solid. We've got that down to positions and, and potential individuals. So to each individual, there's a dollar amount tied to that position. So we, I, I would like to thank Mrs. Penza for her hard work in, in nailing down that figure as close as it is. So we want to try to make sure that you have reliable information in front of you at all times.
We just need to understand better what programs that affects.
Understood. That's, that's a, that's a future conversation.
And I'd just point the rest of the board's attention to basically the, the actual versus budget spreadsheet. We didn't, we didn't release that yet. My apologies, and we'll send that out.
Because we got, you wanted us to add comments.
Right. So as soon as, when we went through, there's a, there's a line by line by line spreadsheet that, which you guys have seen in the past, which basically breaks down what the costs were over the last four years in each of these categories, and what the ink, what the proposal is for next year, the variance in both dollars and percentages, and, you know, that's where we spent some time drilling down at each of those lines to better understand what the variances were, why they were there, and we wanted the administration to basically put those explanations, embed them into the spreadsheet before sending it to you, so when you had an opportunity to look at it, you could just click on the notes and see, okay, well, that's what that category was, and that's what makes up that number. It's, it's, you know, it's, special education can be OTs, PTs, whatever the case may be, and it's increasing because of X, Y, and Z, or such and such is decreasing, and this is what's in that category. So when do you estimate you guys will have that completed? Sometime this week? You guys think you'll have that out this week?
I won't have time to have met with all the department heads, but we can give you the best information, we'll just keep it an ongoing process.
Well, I want to get this, I want to get this spreadsheet to the rest of the board, and so if you guys, I don't know, to the degree you can just put in here what those codes are, like other.
I started to do that today. So that part, yes, but you're, why is it increasing, why is it decreasing? That's part of it.
No, no, but let's get version one out, and then.
By the end of the week.
And then version two could be explanations for the variances.
See, what we haven't done yet as part of this is, I have a departmental meeting of each of the departments, that really hasn't taken place yet to, to set that aside and get this done. So that's the next step of the process, and that'll begin post haste tomorrow, so.
I, I don't want to, I'm not going to ramble, but I guess I want to answer, ask the question. There, there's a lot of things on, on here that very potential, there's a good potential, even if there's no change in data here, that if we fail to pass those budget, then what happens? I mean, so I mean, in all seriousness, this is the way to balance, we all agree yet, this is what you have to do, balance, but we're not, that's what we do.
That's our budget workshop, that's the state case.
But even if, even if the budget workshop, it comes out, this is still it, I mean, we end of the board.
Well, I mean, I think it's. I mean, I think at the end of the day, you have to decide, you know, are you going to use all your fund balance to make up some of these?
Doesn't get us off, again, I think it's a very real possibility that you, that would be very hard to get five votes to pass a budget with these criteria as outlined, and then my question is, maybe that's what we need to ask our solicitor, what happens at that point there?
Well, the state does it for you. State, state comes in.
And again, we've not had that question clearly defined, I mean, or, or we force to back and look at it, look at it, look at it, to the point where we draw our hands on it. If June comes and the state says, okay, we're going to void it, well, they.
We have to have a balanced budget passed by 33.
Basically, we're all, we're all fired.
I don't know, we, that's fine.
If the state comes in and they make, they appoint somebody, they make all the decisions.
Well, we can have, we can have Brian tell us stuff, so that, right, Samara, just so we understand for sure what happened. Maybe that'll motivate us to actually rebalance this thing.
Look, I mean, clearly, you know, negotiations are going to have to play a key, key role in this, because 65% of our budget is salaries and benefits, and 70% of this budget gap is salaries and benefits. So you can't, you can't work in 30% of our budget to balance this thing. It's going to require, it's going to require other parties to come to the table to, to solve the problem. And the alternative is, you know, you're basically looking at spending all your fund balance and perhaps not still. balance and perhaps not still getting to where you need to be, so, um, we'll see what happens.
I think preliminarily, as, as, you know, the, you know, as the person responsible for program, there are some good discussions here I'd prefer not to have, in terms of program, as, as I think all of you wouldn't either, but there's some realities that we're looking at, and we need to address them, because the, the money is what the money is. No smoke and mirrors here, this is all real, real information, other than a few dollars and cents off based on what we might see coming from the state.
Okay. Any other questions from board members?
This is the first time I've heard, you got property.
It's that.
That's the, the transition house.
It's the house up here next to the high school?
That was the original, that was the last name of the owner prior to this, we just kind of nicknamed it that.
We bought, we bought this house.
We annexed that property and bought it.
And we used part of the property to, you know, for parking and, and to get the, the stadium, uh, project passed and built, and now we're using that property, um.
The BCIU is renting.
Who is renting the property out from us and using it as a transition house.
The other thought process, though, is the high school's landlocked, so there's an opportunity to buy it, so there's a, any other expansion to the high school, but right now, the, the high school being landlocked, there's no other way, if any future, obviously, right now, no future, uh, growth, you know what I mean?
No, I, I've just never heard the name before.
And then even with that, we have to hope that we can, in fact, sell it.
That's not a guarantee.
Correct, in that context.
In this economy.
In that context.
Sometimes every budget's something.
Correct.
So if I can ask the question of, uh, schedules for the budget workshop, what do you, what do you think it?
Well, um, I think December would be the first one we could schedule.
After Thanksgiving break.
I would think. We just need to know what everybody's schedule's going to be for like that, the first three weeks of December, so we can, uh, schedule one. And obviously, there's other committee meetings that are taking place that we need to work around.
Committee meeting, push, I mean, I, it is important, is there committee meetings that are, you know, not having a curriculum instruction committee or a finance meeting or anything else?
I think we're going to, we're going to have.
Well, this would be in lieu.
Can I, can I make a suggestion? Can I, can I make a suggestion that Mr. Bayes will come up with one a month from December through May?
I need everyone to communicate to me what their availability is, though it doesn't do me any good to pick a date, and then five people can't show up, so.
I can help, and I'll send an email out to coordinate that effort.
Yeah, I mean, what day of the week, what week works better, what, you know, at least try to do it, because I think, Mr. Semenera, I think you're right, if we wait, we're not going to get this started until January, on February.
Somebody has a committee meeting on, and like the committee meeting.
Correct.
Take back seats.
Correct.
Well, some of the committee work, frankly, could be bumped into your committee of the whole if, if there's something that needs to be done.
Yes.
Because I'm thinking of the course of Selective Course Guide.
Selective Guide.
We can bring that here if we have to.
Correct. But we're going to talk about that in December, anyway, there's a question on Tuesday.
Right.
Okay. Any other questions or comments from board members? Uh, questions or comments from the public? Okay. Seeing none, we'll move on.
Under personnel, just, um, I just want to draw attention to A to A. Um, Mrs. Detwiler, who's been a longtime employee in the district office, has decided to, um, retire, so we'll be voting that, uh, next month. Mr. Liptak, also long-standing security staff from the high school, so those are, um, two people we'll see go with regrets. And the others are routine approvals, um, all the way through. Sorry, no further comment on those.
Okay. I thought I had a question on. Guess I don't, I thought I rolled a question down there.
If you have one.
If I have one, I'll get in touch with you. Okay, any comments from board members on that? Okay, seeing none, moving on to programs.
Comments from.
I'm sorry, uh, public, any comments on personnel? Okay, seeing none, moving on to programs.
Monthly enrollment report is attached, nothing outstanding to report there. Item B is to approve a trip, and it does look like it's pretty far in advance, but these trips generally need a lot of advanced planning, so I commend the advisor for putting this out there, uh, at this point. And that is, again, sometimes those trips are approved, and then enough students don't come forward, I'm assuming that she believes she will have enough to run that trip, and those generally take place, the boards approve those generally for summertime, so it doesn't conflict with any school, loss of school time.
I have a question, are there two chaperones on that?
You know, I honestly don't know, I'd have to look at the form, and, with ten students, I, I don't.
I know, it's.
I, I honestly don't know, I can get back to you.
But I mean, maybe there should be even thirty, ten.
Right, yeah, I'll check into that.
Current environment.
Mr. Henkel, do you know? How many chaperones for the Spanish trip? So there's only one so far?
Uh, uh, again, I'm just asking the question. That's my, that's my question, I think, do we have a policy for, do they have a policy?
I'd have to check the field trip policy, I don't, it might address that, we'll check that, it's not approved yet.
That's my question, we might, that, that might, you might want to let Mrs. Aurora know now.
Okay, no, we'll check that.
She might have to get a second chaperone.
We do have a field trip policy, so we can check that.
Nothing against.
No, 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 I understand.
If something against a trip, it's.
Yeah, but I think we have some leeway with our policy to.
Yeah, but we're approving a trip, then we should approve the second chaperone.
Question, why, are we, why are we approving the trip that's happening outside the school of the calendar year?
Generally.
And it's a non, I mean, we don't approve Mr. Boyle's trips.
Yeah, but.
No, we don't, so.
No, we don't, I agree with that, but.
This is outside, it's not part of the course.
That's a good question.
Um.
Again, I'm just raising the point where it's.
Because she's, because she's running it through the Spanish club, he's running it through nothing.
This is connected to the school in terms of, in fact, because she's taking it as a Spanish trip.
If I'm correct, therefore, it's completely in school, Mr. Boyle's is completely, it's nothing. Okay, I have a question, no, I have a question, though. Where do the funds, the funds go into student, uh, if the funds the students pay go into the Spanish club's bank account, then it goes through us.
Again, I'm just saying that there may, this may be a gray area.
We'll check it out.
What I'm saying to you, that's what I mean, if it's, anything's running through.
And I agree, there probably should be one in five, not one in ten.
Well, I just think there should be two, no matter what.
We'll just check our policy, and I'll get back with a clarification if needed.
No, my point is, I think there should be two, even if there's three students. Yeah, yeah, boy scout, uh. Okay, yeah, again.
Good suggestions.
Absolutely, checked into it.
I just had a quick question on the enrollment, um, figures. You guys have put on here, um, the gifted and the special ed, I just want to make sure I understand the dash, uh, there, I got one right here.
Oh, okay.
So this means one gifted student, eighteen special ed students, is that what that means?
Yes.
For a total of, uh, four gifted students.
Yes.
And forty-nine special education students.
Yeah, that's correct. Because the, the gift is on the first side, and then the slash is the special ed.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, any other comments, uh, by the board? Seeing none, any comments from the public? Okay, moving on to policy.
I have a number of policies in front of you that have all been reviewed by the policy committee. Uh, policies A through F are revisions of existing policies, and, um, there's no significant changes in them, other than updating them and making them align with current practices. So there are, they are in a first reading, if you would happen to have questions, we can answer them now, or you can just let me know what questions you might have.
Dr. Otto, I have a question.
Go ahead, Connor.
All right, for policy one twenty and the accompanying, um, administrative guidelines, it's mentioned, um, let me find it real quick here.
Dig mine out, too.
Okay, I'm ready when you are.
Oh, go ahead. I have it.
Okay, it says, there's some wording changed in the final paragraph on the last page. Under five review, it says, "The superintendent shall develop administrative procedures and guidelines for the review of instructional materials by parents."
Correct.
And the "by parents" was just inserted. Um, is there a reason that we're limiting it to parents and not to members of the community at large?
I think it would be synonymous there, um, that, the, the code site that you see there, section four point four D, is a provision in the school code for, for parents to, uh, review, uh, any aspect of the, of instructional materials. So I can check that out for you, I don't know if there's a difference.
If we can, well, I think in English, I guess there would be a difference. Um, can we add in language that says "by parents," um, and members of the community? I, I just feel more comfortable with that, because I don't want to limit the review of material just to parents, if there's a member of the community who doesn't have children in the district, or even a student, I think they should be able to come forward too. And in practice, that might be how it is, but I'd just like to have that reflected in policy.
I'll clarify that, I'll get a, a response, I'll look in, into the state code regulations myself, and also run that by Mr. Subers, it's a good question.
Great, okay, thank you.
Is that it?
Yep.
Okay, then.
I'm sorry, I have a question.
Go ahead.
Since we're doing this by next week is turnaround, or no, I'm sorry, did the attorney bet these?
Yes. In terms of I, J, and K, uh, G, H, excuse me, I'm going to my notes here. Oh, I have two pages here, that's what's messing me up. I, J, and K are, uh, first readings of new policies. For some reason, we didn't have a policy that spelled out the extracurricular participation by home education students, which we needed to do, so that's compliant with what state code regulation says we have to do.
I did read that one in particular, how do we confirm that they're compliant?
Say that again.
I mean, how do we confirm that they're compliant, regulations? Do we have a, do we have a policy for our youth activities, uh, and activities where that if you're not within, you're failing, or two subjects, they do a number of years ago, that they wanted us to change in our policy for that? How we, how are we ensuring that the, either cyber student or anybody who is not within our cricket board building aren't complying regulations?
As far as, there's a distinction that you have to make, because the, the rules and regulations for cyber students are different, we can actually charge them a fee for participating, that we can't for homeschooled students, and homeschooled students have to actually submit an affidavit to say they're homeschooled. Once you do that, um, when you're in the homeschool realm, and I'm taking a long time to answer this, so just bear with me, the, um, homeschooled student, um, the, the student tuition that we get, the reimbursement factor, we don't ever get that for that student, because they've never been here. A student who goes to cyber school is technically a student enrolled here, so when they're not in the system, their money goes somewhere, and it doesn't come to us, it goes to the cyber charter school. Homeschooled students, we never get a reimbursement for, because they're not enrolled with us.
Okay, well, that, that wasn't the question.
Yeah, but I think, yeah, the question I think is, because you charge them a fee, you don't really care if they, they have a passing grade or not.
We can't monitor a homeschool's grade, a homeschooler's grade, but we have to let them participate by state law.
But we charge them.
We can charge them an activity fee.
Well, yeah, I have, I have an issue with that. We're saying that our students who go into our building, our, our cricket board students have, they cannot, they're failing more than two, cannot fail two courses and still participate, but a homeschooled student can theoretically be failing two, two courses and still participate, we're, we're not holding you to the same level of academic excellence.
The only thing I can say is that, if you look at, at line ten on one twenty-one point one, it says the student fulfills all eligibility criteria or their equivalent, so it's really hard for us to determine, because we don't even, we don't have the authority under the school code to even grade or evaluate any of the work. They get an evaluator to do that for us.
If our policy says that a student who not participating in the sport, if they're failing two important courses, whether it is a homeschooled student or a cyber school student, you should have the ability to ask for proof that they're not, that they're within our guidelines to be an athlete, that they have to prove it.
I don't disagree with you, I just, I know that it would be very.
And right here, you, it states that they must fulfill.
That's correct.
How do we prove that they're fulfilling, because they say, yeah, and.
I, I think all you can do is ask, right, but we can't demand.
But do we ask? That's, I mean, that's the point, I mean, do we ask at all? Can we, you know, supply, I mean, I, I know that it may not, you know, maybe it's a small point, but again, with, with the, the population going to some, to, going in that direction of cyber school, going into homeschool, and going into some other form of alternative schooling other than in our buildings, how can we be assured that the, the education, I mean, that's what we're all here for, we're here to, to make sure that the students get a proper, good, uh, education, and if they're not doing that, because we can't confirm that the gentleman that came, that comes from the school at home is currently passing, because we can't, we can't look in the books, we can't look in the grade sheet, we have to assume they are because they show up, can't we ask the parent for documentation?
Dr. Otto, um, Michelle does get, um, the student's, on their grades.
Okay. All of these. We'll make sure that policy addresses that.
I mean, yeah.
Question answered.
Okay, any other questions or concerns on some of these policies? Again, we'll be meeting.
I don't want to, I just want to make something clear as far as homeschooled students, and I, I do understand your point, but the state, and I know it sounds convoluted and, and, and a little bit odd, but we really, as a school district, have just about zero say in the evaluation of the homeschooled student's academic program, I just want to make that clear. We, as a school district.
You said that anybody who's participating in the sports, that they need to be passed, cannot be failing more than two courses, that is, whether they're a homeschooled student, a cyber student, or a student in our building, we can enforce that policy.
I think the issue that, that comes up is, you have one state law that's saying, you got to allow these kids to participate.
Right.
Right, and you have another law that says, you can't ask, or you can't demand, uh, proof that, of whatever their, their, their current grades are. So I, I think where we're left is, we can ask, but the issue that the policy doesn't address is, what happens if they say, we're not going to share that with you? Do we, do we let them play, or we?
Actually, I'll get clarification from Mr. Subers, it's a good question.
Yeah.
All right, and policy J and K are, are first passes, that we've discussed these kind of at length in the committee, on concussion management and sudden cardiac arrest, which the state is asking us to put on the books. So that's it for policy.
Okay, and again, policy committee meets Wednesday night.
Our next policy committee meeting, for the benefit of the public, is this Wednesday night at the high school library.
Seven o'clock.
Seven o'clock. Lots to talk about.
Okay, any, um, any board, any more board comment?
Just, just one comment, in case anyone is, is interested, because I know it's a hot topic, the policy eight twenty-nine is still being reviewed by the policy committee, and we hope to have, uh, a lot of that, uh, sort of played up at the next meeting.
You mean, you need to text it?
Yes, I have some suggestions.
The one that deals with texting.
Are we doing benchmarking on that one, as well, as far as what other districts are doing?
We actually base that policy on what other districts are doing, we just amped it up a little bit more than what they have.
Actually, a little bit of research that I've done on it, at least, uh, via the internet, is, there isn't a whole lot out there addressing the issue, so I think school districts are really just looking at it for the first time.
The, the two that we use locally, Exeter has one in place, and Fleetwood has one in place, ours is a notch up in terms of, uh, our expectation.
Okay, any other comments from board members? Okay, any questions or comments from members of the public? All right, seeing none, we'll move on to transportation.
You have in front of you, uh, a motion that will approve the two thousand twelve, thirteen bus drivers and bus stops, um, from our transportation contractors, there are two attachments for that. Just as a side note, this is a, kind of a post-agreement, it's a requirement by PDE, state board regulations to annually approve this list, and it's more for audit purposes, um, at the end of the year.
You just confirmed one of the bus drivers has embedded our license files again.
Right, that's all Klein's doing, Klein and Rhodes have to take care of that, this is again, a, a post event.
I voted on it last year, so, I still ask that same question.
I always ask the question, what if we don't? What if we don't approve it? I'm just asking the question. No, I'm just asking the question, because again, it's not our employees, we have no, We have no, we have no control over any of them. We have no, you know, any aspect of them. They're contractors, so why?
They have guidelines to follow.
Yeah, but why do we have to approve them?
Because they have to submit this list for post audit purposes. I think it's tied to transportation reimbursement.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, seeing none, moving on to old business.
Under the revenue enhancement committee, Mrs. Hamel and I had a conversation today. We kind of got lucky today. We did finally break through with school media. I got actually two phone calls today, but I would actually like to put it in front of the board to make a determination as to whether we want to approach school media with the revisions that Mr. Subers has proposed. There's still a little bit more information we need from them, but they indicated their willingness to allow us to give them a prototype contract today, and then that their legal team would work with it along with ours, and then we would go on from there. So if you want us to proceed with that, Mr. Subers said he would get involved and begin to hash out a contract.
Yes. Sure, I think, yeah.
I mean, that's really all it is at this point.
I mean, to order this before, we have to, I mean, again, I personally would go by our solicitor, so if our solicitor, if they want the changes or the compromise to some of these changes, then I'm okay with it.
I feel like you do a number of contracts for businesses typically, and when it gets down to a point where you get, you come to agree with the one of the business and you let the lawyer handle it.
Yeah, exactly, and I agree. I agree with that.
They don't have a hands.
Correct. I was just frankly, they had been very hard to get a hold of in the past, and for whatever reason, they responded very, very easily. They were very easy to get a hold of, and they seemed to want to do business.
I think the issue, the reason why we want to make sure this was on the agenda was just because revenue enhancement committee, I think, needed some direction from the board, whether to move forward or to abandon this item. And if everyone's of a consensus move forward, then we'll move forward and let Brian Subers address this with, you know, his proposal, the revised contract to school media. School media will respond, and we'll go from there.
Well, I talked to school media today, and I have a representative now, Jason, who's taking our case, and he would like to set up, and I talked to him in the email, that Janet would have a conference call with us, and I would set that up sometime in December, depending on whether the reorganization, whoever gets that position, can set up a conference call, and then with, if Subers is here, we can go over the contract with her via the conference call.
Can't we just take the revisions that he currently has and just send it to him?
Correct. He said that we could do, he called that you could mock up the contract.
Well, I think a lot of the question was directed toward them, and we could ask all the questions we want on the conference call, even though we still have the contract to go through.
They won't come here?
Uh, they don't.
They're in Michigan, I think.
They're in Minnesota.
Well, they have a representative. They said that that would take months for them to have a representative.
That's more my concern.
Come here, but she can do it much better with a conference call.
I can't, I guess I just ask Dr. Otto a question. They're in Minnesota, how do they get the ads if they're out there and they won't come to me with us about getting the contract?
Well, they've worked with people in Pennsylvania, different companies.
They have worked with Pensbury already, but in truth in advertising, Pensbury did have some concerns about working with them, but they didn't break their contract with them at the same time either. So I think that's where the legal teams need to talk and make sure our interests are protected.
I mean, again, I understand, you know, the issue, but I would have Brian approach their legal team on that, because if they're unwilling to.
Correct.
Say, give us, you know, a one-year contract or three, one-year options or something, and that's a deal breaker.
That's right.
Conference calls.
Correct.
Well, it sounded like they were willing, they were wanting to talk to our solicitor. They wanted to make it work.
Then send, send our.
Let's do that first and then.
Yeah.
Right, that's what the plan is.
So send us, send Mr. Subers' changes and see what they say.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure if that was the direction, then we'll.
Sounds like we're good to go.
Was this the first and only conversation you had with them recently? You said you got them on the phone?
We just happened to call the same day.
We just, it was just ironic. I hadn't talked with Monica about whether or not she was talking, she had just indicated that she was having trouble getting a hold of them, and I offered to make, to reach out to them.
I mean, my memory is a little sketchy, but I thought what I remember was when you outreach to the other students, Pensberg, was it?
Pensbury.
Pensbury. They, they shared with you a couple of things that weren't as great as we had hoped they would.
First of all, the income level was, and I'll just repeat them for the purpose of the conversation, the income fell extremely short of where they expected to be, and they had some concerns with repairs as ads came off of walls. So that's just, again, truth in advertising. I think contractually, we make sure we're protected that way and just go from there.
Not to be rude, not being in sales, but I think if you want the account, it shouldn't take you six weeks to answer a phone call or an email.
Honestly, I didn't reach out.
No, I'm not saying you, I'm saying them.
Because I wasn't.
But if Dr. Otto placed several calls or emails, you'd think that they would call or email back in a reasonable amount of time. A week or two is reasonable, six, eight weeks is not reasonable if you want the account.
I'm not, I'm not being negative because I'm.
Neither am I.
But my last recollection was that we heard some negative thing.
We did.
And now we're talking about moving in the contract. So I want to know if we resolved those negative.
No, no, I think the way you protect against those, that's part of the contract.
That's part of the change in the contract.
Mr. Subers took those negative issues.
And incorporated them in the contract.
If the walls were destroyed, the paintings removed, and the, you know, pads were destroyed, you know, we were responsible for it.
But as far as the revenue side of it, I know we can protect ourselves against that, but if we're not making the money that we think we're going to make, why are we doing it? So did we, why did, why did they fall short of revenue? What was the issue? I thought what I remember was they weren't getting timely advertisements or something like that.
Well, they had, they only made around $6,000 if I remember correctly. The problem, the ads, they change every three months. So in the process of changing the ad, they messed up the paint. I talked to them today about that, and I brought it up. I said, you know, I heard that the paint was being peeled off the walls, you know, this is something we're going to have to address. He said that issue has been taken care of. 3M had provided them with a certain glue.
Get back to the revenue side.
It's right now, all we know is.
Why isn't it only 6M? What, it's not the paint on the wall that.
I think it's the amount of ads that they're able, it's the companies that will enter into agreements with them, because they have to go out and solicit. That's their marketing.
Shouldn't they have a whole bunch of companies already that they're willing to advertise there?
That was my first impression with Tony. Remember, this is talk for a couple of different people because they're in the growing process.
Well, that's another thing.
They've only been in business for like three years, so they've had some representatives come and go. Right now, Jason is being our representative, and then he's looking to go forward with changing the contract, looking forward to doing what we want.
Do they have a list, do they have a list of ads that they're willing to go with? Like say, I don't know what it is, 50 different companies. Do they have that in stock? Because if they do, then Mr. Semenaro's question should be, the revenue side should be no problem, because they can give us 50 different accounts and we pick 20 of them from, which is what Pensbury should be able to do. But if they only have, but if they only have three accounts, but if they only got three, if they only got three clients, then this isn't my point.
When I asked to have a list of all the schools that they were.
No, no, I'm not asking for schools.
To find out what type of list they have for companies.
Correct.
He told me that they were unable to give that information out because they have not signed all their contracts, and they were not going to give out information on companies pending.
Okay, I'm not asking, but the ones they signed, they could give us the signed contracts.
I think this is a, this is one of those catch 22 deals. You have a startup business that's trying to get clients, and they're also trying to get ads. And so, you know, you go to an advertiser and they say, well, show me your client base. I don't have a client base. When you get a client base, come back and talk to me, I'll be one of your advertisers. You go to your clients, you say, gee, I want you to, you know, I want to do advertising with you, and they say, well, show me your sponsors. I don't have any sponsors, I need clients.
I agree with that.
So I think we have to just kind of take this as a, it's a startup. My reaction to it is, you know, let's get the contract hammered out. If the contract meets what our requirements are, then we can decide whether we want to move forward or whether or not.
Protect us from our expenses or whatever, sure, let's try.
Even if it makes $6,000 in the first year, it's $6,000 that we can make in, and it's just a piece of paper on the wall.
And again, I mean, the big thing, the thing I wanted to do was, was our plan, they were the ones to opt out of it. We were going to put language in that we could opt out of one year renewable option. If we all had it, at the end of year one, we make little or no money. So you know what? It didn't work, we part, we move on, we'll get something else. We got to give it a shot, but let's let the attorneys hammer out the terms and conditions because they may not come to an agreement, and this is all viewed anyways.
Right.
At some point, I would address them flat out and say, we've done some due diligence, and we see that you, you fell, you fell short. We want to know.
Well, I think.
How you going to progress? Company as a business, what are you going to do for us?
Let's just see how they react to our changes in our contract.
That's where I think you hold them accountable.
That's the whole point of due diligence, right?
Right.
Is once you learn something, then go do something with that.
Right.
I think you ask them, you ask them flat out.
Correct.
I think it's a good suggestion.
Let's see their reactions to our changes.
Okay, well, you guys, you know.
Do we know what to do?
Okay. Second item here is Daniel Boone organizational chart. Mr. Kurtz, are you there?
Yes, I'm here.
This was the one that you and I had some conversation about. He had said, Mr. Kurtz had suggested some minor edits to the chart.
Yes, would you like me to detail those edits?
If you want to, very briefly.
All right, sure. I've proposed a few different changes. I know we were talking about this at the previous meeting, and my understanding was we could forward potential changes to Dr. Otto, and that's what I did. Some of them were just a few small corrections. APC wasn't on there, so I added that. And I also moved the APC principal over to make her a little bit more autonomous. Have you guys seen my revision? I think I forwarded it, forwarded it to the entire board.
Yeah, I saw it. Yes, they've seen it.
Okay. So Dr. Otto agreed to most of those things. They were small changes, but something I didn't quite understand, and maybe it was just a lack of effective communication, but when you look at the current chart, it shows the high school faculty and staff, there's a line connecting them to Dane Miller, but not to Jenny Rexrode. And I think there should be a, I think that line should be in between Dane Miller and Jenny Rexrode because they both have the same degree of authority.
Correct.
At least that's my understanding. But currently, how the chart looks, there's only a line collecting, connecting Dane Miller and the high school faculty and staff, and there's no line connecting faculty and staff at the high school to Jenny Rexrode.
Yes, that line should go on, should be.
Right, we agreed. My purpose, Mr. Kurtz, was to just bring it in front of the board, and then we would.
Oh, okay, because that was the area where there was a little bit of disagreement in the email, at least how I understood it. Yeah, and then there was one other thing about including the 10-month and 11-month for the assistant principals.
Yeah, we can remove that. I don't think they need to be there.
Okay, yeah, I just wanted to bring that to the board too, and that was really the extent of my alteration.
Then we'll make those changes. For discussion purposes, I just wanted to bring it forward.
Oh, okay, all right. Thank you for letting me explain my logic.
Okay. Thanks for taking a look at it, Connor, we appreciate it. Third item under here is BCTC.
Yes, we did have another follow-up with BCTC as far as the arrival times and their, Mr. Wolf had brought it to our attention that there was, again, there seemed to be a discrepancy, but we followed up again, and the timing does allow for our students to complete course requirements. There may be an occasional time when traffic is a little heavy, where they're not, they're not crossing a finish line at a given time, so, but we believe that with, from them, they have assured us that the students who go to, and this is really now only affecting the BCTC West campus, that there could be some traffic issues that cause them to get there a few minutes late here and there, but.
I think my only concern was, are the students up, have they met their credit requirements? Because I think that was one of the issues that you raised, Mr. Wolf, last time, was that they were falling short.
We've been assured by the BCTC that it won't be a problem for them to meet their requirements.
So when they gave us, gave us the schedule, it was two hours and 15 minutes.
Correct.
And then maybe a phone call was made, spoke to someone, and it turned out it was two and a half hours. I followed up, because I wanted to know why the discrepancy, and Dr. Lee's actually confirmed what the original schedule was of two hours and 15 minutes. And that's, that was the email that I forwarded to you later, and said, you know, I'm not, you know, at this point, I'm not sure who's giving the right number, so I think there was still a question of what the actual tendency is, because Dr. Lee says there wasn't improvement, we're still, and that was last correspondence to me was that we're still at two hours and 15 minutes. So it was still short.
So the kids still need to make up two hours and 15 minutes?
No, they should have two hours and 30 minutes each.
I see.
And they're getting two hours and 15 minutes.
And they're 15 minutes, sure.
If you go by two, you know, Dr. Lee's in the chart that we got in the beginning, but a counselor was contacted in the interim, who said that they actually do need the two and a half hours. So at that point, I just said, gave it to Dr. Otto.
So do we have something writing from them assuring us that they, that the kids are meeting the required times?
Not that I'm aware of.
Because at the end of the day, I don't want to just get to May and all of a sudden the kids are out of luck. I'd rather have something writing from them saying, hey, look, they are, they aren't. If they are, you know, you can send that back to them saying, look, you guys said in October that our kids are meeting the requirements.
Mr. Wolf, you see, we had an email from one counselor who was involved. The counselor contacted.
Mr. Hankel, do you want to give us some background on some of your conversations with the tech?
These kids just called $20,000. It wasn't the issue that does. It was just that they were sure as a day, they were sure that Ms. Rich, she was going to get more, it's made, or something, they're writing comments.
I just think it'd be smart to have it in our back pocket in case it becomes an issue later on.
Or even if any of the students, if they are sure, if there's any students that would be affected by not having the minimum number of hours.
Right.
They not even be a problem.
Right. Yeah, I just don't want the students out of luck because something out of their control. That would be a real shame. And I guess we need to think about that for next year when all these bridges start closing too, how these kids get there on time and.
It's going to be a challenge.
Okay, any other questions or comments on those items? All right, new business, late real estate tax penalty refund requests.
Board members, we've forwarded to you a number of written requests for late taxes since the penalty phase kicked in as of November 1st. There are some requests based on extenuating circumstances. It's not been our policy to grant exceptions, so that's why they're in front of the board.
If I remember right, a gentleman came from, from last year, based on a snowstorm, I went back and I couldn't find him, and we did not grant him an exception.
That is correct.
So, I mean, again, I don't know, I don't know these people, I don't know a lot of them, but I would think that we've already set a precedent, so we did grant him an exception. And if we grant, these individuals an exception, then he's got a very good likelihood to come back on his stand and say, well, granted them, I want my money back because it was a snowstorm, I can make it. These bills come out of the lobby, and, you know, wait the last minute, roll the dice, and it just happens, what happened. Others may feel differently, but...
Does anybody else have a differing opinion?
I don't really have an objection to granting the, uh, the extended few-day, uh, period. I, maybe in the past, there's a precedent, but, I mean, things have to change at some point, if that's what the board believes. I don't think we, that should be our argument, but in the past, we haven't done it, so we shouldn't do it in the future.
Okay, how, how long do you go, Mr. Kurtz? Two days?
How long?
Yeah, two days, a week? Somebody comes in...
Well, okay, just give a second.
Well, I'm asking the question.
Give me a chance.
I'm not, I'm not sure. I mean, the hurricane has ended, so obviously, we can't go now.